Sorry, I didn't record. Was that right? I didn't record. Okay, got it, all right. All right, so let's all rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. I think, I don't know how this happened. People are all in the corner over there, so. The, we have homeowners here. The two homeowners associations are Prairie Trails and Preserve of Long Grove. So, online is, I don't think there's anyone in person from either one. It's Mark Passini from Prairie Trails here. Is Ben Miller from the Preserves of Long Grove, Preserve of Long Grove here? Anybody from any of those HOAs? If not, we'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment from anyone online or anyone in the room? And we received no written public comment other than emails telling us how to handle our bridge. Yeah. Those were not written comments, per se. The, so then we're going to move, keep ourselves moving. We have the public safety report. I see Lieutenant Kaiser here. Do you have anything to share with us?
Nothing that hasn't been said already.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Then we'll move right along. We have a consent agenda. There are several items on it. One is the February 2023 Treasurers Report. Another is the executive session minutes from the February 28th meeting. Then we have the meeting minutes from the 28th board meeting. And then we have a consideration of approval of a resolution approving our annual update to the long growth zoning map. I do have a concern on that that I will talk to Vic about here in a second. And then we also have consideration of approval of a resolution for improvements under the Illinois Highway Code 350K. And I believe that's to use the MFT funds. So, the zoning map, though, I am going to just bring it up here quickly in the room because I think, I just showed this to Vic. This parcel right here, we lost our zoning in the map and that, according to Vic, that should not have changed. It should still show the R3 even though IDOT bought it.
Correct. The village has zoning control over the property. Whether it applies to a particular property or not depends on circumstances, but our zoning map is still reflective or should still be reflective of how we had designated it. So, to the extent that that was, or any other change was made of that time, we should correct that and show the underlying zoning.
Yeah, that was the only one.
Who did that?
I think they brought in the land that IDOT brought and then inadvertently took the zoning off of there then. So, let's give my cartographers.
So, I just wanted to call that out, so that's incorrect. And then, so if we approve it, it will be subject to the revision back to the way it was, right? And then, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the MFT resolution. If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve unless there's any other changes anyone else wants to highlight on minutes or anything. If not, I'm looking for a resolution to approve the consent agenda as, with the map amended back to the way it was before. Okay, moved by Trustee O'Connor. Second by Trustee Browski. Roll call.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Browski.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Upstate.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Canucci.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. All right.
Can I just say one other thing? Looks like Trustee Kritzmeyer has joined the meeting. Do we need to vote on?
Yeah, we need a motion to, we need a motion to allow her to attend.
Thank you, Ken.
Welcome.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Connor.
Only anybody who's on the call that's already in the meeting could make that motion.
Who's been approved. So Kent or Jenny can.
Okay, thanks. I'll second it though, just to move it forward.
Just, okay, just to be difficult, yeah. All right, second by Trustee Browski.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Browski.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Canucci.
Hi.
Haven't seen my difficulty yet.
Oh, no, yeah, it's coming soon to a theater near you, okay. All right, motion approved. All right, moving right along, we have the Village Planners Report. Now, is Taylor, yeah, you're here Taylor, are you going to present that?
Hey, good evening and thank you President Jacob. Yeah, the main item from our planners' report this week is related to last week's Architectural Commission meeting. This was held on Monday, March 20th. And the only item on the agenda that evening was the Brothers Field Proposal Project, which is a proposal to demolish the existing structure at 340 Old McHenry Road and replace it with a new build, similar architectural style, if you will, on that structure, but it would be a wholly new structure, as well as the accessory structures on the property that are related to kind of this Brothers Field outdoor entertainment use that's been occurring on the property. So, there's the tiki bar, there's some kind of railroad fencing on the property, some pathways, lighting, furniture, and tents. So, this item went to the Architectural Commission, just to kind of summarize that, and this is in my report, but the Architectural Commission, which is also the Historic Preservation Commission, noted that due to the age of this structure, which dates to the mid-1800s, one date out there is 1855, which makes it even for long growth standards, a very old structure. But due to that history, they felt they had a duty to kind of evaluate and assess any alternatives to demolition. So, they kind of charged the applicant to provide a little more information and to engage some professionals to further explore options to preserving the structure, whether that be the entire structure or a portion of it, or maybe utilizing the other structures on the property for this specific use and leaving that building as is, or just any and all options to save that, to hear them through on that regard. As it relates to the other structures, they did have some additional comments. If I were to summarize them, it's more or less to make more permanent the structures that are out there, specifically that the tiki bar structure, they would like to see those be objects that reflect the architecture of the downtown. You know, notably, these structures have been stored outdoors even when the property is not in use. So, when they're not in use, they should still have some sort of architectural consistency with the downtown area. And then they just wanted to see some more detailed plans for the structures outdoors, the landscaping, lighting, pathways, et cetera. They did offer a little bit of input on the proposed structure that if, in worst-case scenario, that moves forward to the Planed Zone Commission Village Board, and they offered some kind of light input on their opinions on how that structure is architecturally. But, so they ultimately made a motion to postpone a recommendation until their next meeting. So, this will go back to the Architectural Commission on April 17th. They asked the applicants to allow them to do a walkthrough of the structure with two commission members. So, that has yet to be set up, but tentatively would happen before that date. And we're now, staff are awaiting any additional materials from the applicants there for the April 17th meeting. Moving on, other topics from the planners' report. April 4th will be a PCZBA meeting related to the Royal Melbourne Country Club. They have a proposal to do some platform tennis courts and a platform tennis lounge, they're calling it. It's more or less a concessions building right there near the tennis courts and the existing clubhouse structures. And there's two pickleball courts as well within the scope of that project. Is a Planned Unit Development Amendment, so that's why it's going to the PCZBA on April 4th. If it, whatever that recommendation will be, it will then move forward towards the village board. As mentioned, we'll have an Architectural Commission meeting on April 17th. We expect there to be another sign application on that agenda as well for the new business that has taken over the Oak Flow Cafe at 225 Robert Parker Coffin Road. And we've also, we're also in receipt of a variation application at 3305 Old McHenry Road for a garage that does not satisfy the side yard setbacks. So, that concludes our planners' report.
Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Then we're going to move on to the Village Engineers Report. Engineer Jeff.
Okay, so the engineers' report, we're going to packet a couple things to highlight here. First of all, is the bridge. Not going to talk about the hits that happened over the weekend. There was some damage. The bridge hit that the repairs were made last week was the result of the February 19th hit. So, Carmichael Construction was out to repair those last week, you know, so address the banging of the west transition bike. So, that reduced the noise over there. Item 1D, we did get bids last week to replace the timber planks and paint the area that's right under those to address the rusting and things. Those bids came in right around $100,000, so we're doing a little bit more investigation on that to see what was the driver of the prices before proceeding. We get two bids, one was a little under $100,000, one was a little over $100,000. But last year, when we were thinking about doing that project, the driver was the price of the lumber. Still trying to tease that out just a little bit more if that's still why that is so expensive and then try to see if there's some indication that that might be more economical later in the year. If so, the village has the ability to delay that project. So, before bringing the $100,000 project to the board for approval, I wanted to do a little bit more homework on that.
What did you anticipate?
We had originally anticipated 52, so half of that.
Were those timber, was the timber deck part of the whole rehab that was done several years ago?
No. When the bridge was moved and then put back, no. That's not.
Several of us questioned that at that time.
Well, sometimes we're smarter than.
Is that part of the historic designation or the timber's part of the historic designation?
The historic designation is the, exactly, the interconnected polytrusts.
I think there's crap in there. I don't want to be dragged out back and beaten by the historical society, but is there any consideration of something other than the timbers to sort of get aside and hold and replacing timbers? Or the other material to use that makes more sense?
Just is the timbers, so I think that's worth consideration, yeah. Good question, at least.
Is there any other option? Timbers or?
I'm thinking like a deck, like a polymer or something like that, maybe. Maybe there's something that's looks like timber, that's not timber, that's cheaper. I know that's how like the truss initially came about a few years ago with, you know, decks, I think it was the decks as a cost-saving measure.
Not historical. If it's not structural.
Right.
But why would it matter?
I know that's used for siding, but.
Yeah, something similar, yes. I think the key is something that looks and feels what it is now. Like a few years ago when the timber cover was put back, you know, the materials and the members were different, but it looks and feels like it did before.
Can I ask a question on that too? Were those boards ever replaced since the bridge was built? Do we know?
Do not know for sure. I don't.
So, they could be original from way back when? How would we find, how would you find that out? Would there be any way to look at the wood or the size of the planks or something?
Because I think they're all carbonated.
Carbonated, no. No, it's just a question that came to mind, like it's been there forever, so does it really matter, right? I just, that's why I was asking.
Was this the guy who was driving the U-Haul, couldn't speak English, and he went to the right of the bridge, went underneath, left the air out of the front tires? Then he got back in the truck and then he backed up into the fall and then he turned his wheels back and forth. Is this the guy we're talking about? That, the timbers?
No, they're just old. They're just old and they're just old.
Oh, okay.
There was no signal that.
I watched this guy. He was a piece of work.
All right, well, anyway.
So, can we have a price differential if they look the same and serve the same purpose?
Yep. Now that you get the point, we'll look into it. But yeah, Bill, to your point, President Bill, I've looked at the side of the planks and I can't count the rings, so I don't know.
Yep, I know, it's one of those questions, but I'd ask.
Anyway, back to the engineers' report. The second item on here is the 2023 Road Maintenance Program, so thank you for passing the MFT resolution. That is one part, the other part is we spent, that I wanted to update the board on, we did the fieldwork. A few meetings ago, the number to resurface the roads between the base bid and both alternates was 1.28 million. We did all the fieldwork, all the measurements, confirmed the numbers. We're actually at 1.23 million now, so let's do it. So, I would be asking for direction and approval to actually complete the package and bid that at this point. So, the process would be to, for us to complete the specification book, send it to IDOT for their approval. They're currently three to four weeks to review and approve a water fuel tax project. And at that point, we go out to bid. Two weeks later, we'd have the bid. So, probably with direction tonight, come back in about two months with bids to actually re-save and consider the bid, the base bid, which is the Creekside Alternate 1, which is Robert Parker Coffin Road, Archer, and then Alternate 2 was three lengths.
How about we add?
Tonight, we'd get bids for consideration in probably about two months.
Okay, so I'll just ask, any objections? Anybody online? Anne, Jenny, Kent?
No objection.
Nope.
I think you have your guidance.
Thank you. Dropping down to number 10, and Andrew Jackson, you can certainly jump in, is the Capital Improvement Plan and the discussion and coordination that the villages have over the last couple weeks regarding community project funding through the congressional representative. The Lake Michigan Water Connection has been discussed with Congressman Shinkowski and Congressman Snyder's office. They're recommending approval for that, but yet they've got to go through their various committees. We were hoping that the formal announcement would come last week. Probably expect it sometime this week, I've got to guess.
We had, we had communication with all three of the congressional representatives' offices last week. Congressman Quigley's deadline was this past Friday. The publication of the grantees will be on April 10th. We are hoping to hear in the, sometime this week. We were contacted by Congresswoman Shankowski as well as Congressman Snyder, who both gave us favorable comments on the submission. In fact, Congresswoman Shankowski's put this project at the top of the list. So, we're hopeful. Last year, we got a good look, but this time it looks like it's pretty strong. This also, this initiative also assists us with the radium mitigation issue that we're going to have to deal with as a village in the not-too-distant future. In fact, Jeff and I had a meeting with Lake County Public Works last week to talk about radium mitigation, so. So, we're very positive, we're hopeful. Nothing's for sure when it comes to appropriations at the federal level or at any level for that matter, but the comments and feedback we've received from the congressional delegation has been positive. Also, we submitted to Senator Duckworth's office as well.
So, if we, if the fate shine upon us, is this kind of grant where it would be 50/50?
80/20.
Could you remind me?
Could you remind me who this would serve?
It would provide water distribution, increased distribution to the South 15. It would provide Lake Michigan water to everybody who's currently on the village well water right now, municipal water right now. And with potential hopes and discussions tonight with the Capital Improvement Plan, we're beginning to expand that water connection further north across Apptekisak and heading north.
So, would we then terminate our well service?
My understanding, and Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that our well would serve as a backup to, or am I, am I wrong with that?
Emergency backup.
So, this expense would serve the village, I assume Sunset Development 15.
Downtown.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry.
And so, that amount of money, how do we equitably, I hate that word, provide this to these people but not these people? So, we, how do we do that?
I think it would be difficult for us at best to have enough capital to do expanded village-wide. I cannot, I can't speak to the complexities of the distribution of the water. I do know that we are going to end up experiencing a continual expense for the radium mitigation, not to mention the upfront capital investment to set up radium mitigation. Another issue that we have is that we have a lack of users in that water system, which causes us to supplement the Water Operation Fund with general fund dollars that can, those general fund.
So, we would further exacerbate that in equitable situation by doing that?
Yes.
Good to know.
I think I understood that. I'm glad we're saying that.
Can I, can I, can I make a comment also? This is Anne. So, part of it is, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay, good deal. Bobby, to your point, I mean, you basically have to take bite one before bite two. And the first thing would be to try to get the Michigan water to, you know, if it's successful, to get it to the current well and the current distribution system and then figure out how do we advantage that for the entire village? But we've got to take bite one before we take any of the other bites.
Thank you, Anne. I don't need further training in Lake Michigan water. Thank you.
I do have a question, though. I pondered bite three, Anne, which is getting that water north of 22 to help us northern residents. When, I mean, I mean, I want to say.
Very much.
Bite one, bite three doesn't exist, you know?
No, I completely agree, Chris. I think what we need to do also is, once we get the first bite of the Lake Michigan water, if that is successful, and I hope it is, because we need to take advantage of that allocation, and then figure out, all right, how do we plan? And not just plan, but, well, I guess, plan, not wish, not hope for north of 22, to your point.
Well, yeah, but we could take that money and use it for something else that we could all use right now. We could extend the path. We could pull trees out in the right ways. We could do a real buckhorn removal. We could do a whole bunch of things to benefit all the residents of the village.
So, remember, if we don't have Lake Michigan water, we have to do radium mitigation, which is a large one-time expense plus an ongoing expense.
Chris doesn't know anything about that, so I hope somebody can explain that soon because I don't know what you guys are talking about. I know what radium is, I know what mitigation is, but I have no idea what the, what the issue is and what the expense is going to be.
We're not cer, to be honest, we're not certain about the full expense. We've got some potential dollars in the Capital Improvement Plan, but it's uncertain on when.
You may want to step back, though, even explain the issue, right? So, is it the IEP?
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, that's a good one.
Okay, so in well water, there's naturally occurring radium needs to get filtered out and discharged. And right now, it gets discharged into the sanitary sewer, which goes to the Displanes River Wastewater Treatment Plant owned and maintained by Lake County Public Works. In 20, late 2019, right before the pandemic, the county passed a pretreatment ordinance, which essentially lays groundwork to pass that cost on to who's putting the radium into the wastewater treatment plant. So, once it gets to the wastewater treatment plant, the county filters it out and then has to dispose of it. So, they're passing on that cost or passing it upstream, if you will. So, Long Grove is, village is grappling with, you know, how to comply with this pretreatment ordinance. There's a few subdivisions in the village as well. Ryer Crest, for example, Royal Melbourne, the two of the biggest ones. And I also mentioned that the village of Lake Zurich is also grappling with complying with this pretreatment ordinance. So, for the village proper to treat the radium, to be able to extract it all, to dispose of it, the village would be looking at a, another filtration system, if you will. Right tag on that, CIP is, what, $400,000, I believe? And since the building itself, that the water treatment plant is at capacity, looking at, you know, building another enclosure to house this thing. So, there's $525,000 in the village's Capital Improvement Plan just to put the infrastructure in place to be able to get the radium out of the water. Then there's the cost of disposing that, which would be the ongoing cost. So, that's a big thing. I say it's naturally occurring in the well water. The Lake Michigan water that would be sourced, you know, from, for example, Buffalo Grove, doesn't have the radium in it. So, that's one of the advantages of the Lake Michigan water versus the well water. Obviously, there's pros and cons each way. I do bring up that Lake Zurich is also discussing how to comply with the pretreatment ordinance. And we actually, Manager Jackson and myself brought it up last week when we talked to Lake County, how is Lake Zurich proceeding with this? Because one option for them is to work with the Central Lake County Joint Agency Water Association, CLAW, for short, if that's short. But anyway, to bring the water main down Route 22 through Buffalo Grove, through Long Grove, to their village. And that could set the stage for bite three at the apple, you know, you have a water main at least on 22. That could perhaps be the catalyst to serve, service more northern properties. As it would, you know, if it comes directly down 22, that would be a kind of easy connection for Royal Melbourne to comply with the treatment ordinance. But yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big expense in Long Grove with few users to, Manager Jackson's point, we don't, the village doesn't put much radium into the system. So, it's a little bit inequitable for the county to ask, you know, for a $500,000 investment for the little bit of radium. So, that's part of the discussion. And President Bill, you probably remember that we, you know, is there a cost that's more economical, you know, hey, just pass along the cost, we pay for it, you know, things like that. At this point, the county's just looking, hey, we don't want radium in our wastewater treatment.
Can I make two? So, first off, I just got a text from Trustee Kritzmeyer, and so you're going to have to address this thing about radium. Everyone's thinking like, oh my God, this is, what's wrong? We have problems with our water, everything like that. So, just the safety issue, go ahead and address that. But I have one other question I want to forget to ask, and that is, our operating costs, I think, go down if the well is not pumping. So, can you share that, what that change would be too? So, there's a trade-off and it'd be a payback on the operating cost for just this downtown water system. So there's a trade-off and it'd be a payback on the operating cost for just this downtown water system if we were to bring Lake Michigan wa-, uh, water in. So if you could answer both those questions, that would be awesome.
Okay. So succinctly, hopefully. So, um, the, the radium, the I E P A sets limits for the amount of allowable radium in the water, uh, safe for drinking. Naturally occurring well water exceeds that limit. Um, I could talk to Mike Crinell on the exact numbers, but some of it has to be filled out to make it safe for drinking and comply with I E P A Clean Water Act standards. That's what we're talking about on that.
So it's naturally in the water, it gets filtered out, but it has to go somewhere.
Yep.
It ends up in the water, run off water or whatever.
Yeah. We put it in the sanitary sewer, it goes to the county, and the county has increased costs to deal with it.
Okay.
And there is an element to this, and I don't know if our system will ever get to that equilibrium. But the way most water systems work is that they are right-sized so that they actually have some accumulating balance that will allow them to do additional capital work as time goes on. We are just the opposite of that model right now. But if the Lake Michigan water connection allows us to expand our base and right-size the budget on it so that we have some ability to accumulate capital for the water system, it will allow the gradual expansion of the system. That's the theory of it. Whether we would ever hit that, you know, I don't know what the numbers are. But, um, that is how most water systems actually expand over time, or, or at least pay for the expansion over time. Sometimes they're bonded out and that water revenue from user fees and, and, and connection fees pays for that. So as far as bite three goes, that's theoretically how it could happen. I don't know what the numbers are, so I don't know whether it ever would happen.
We studied that. We studied that, like, ten years ago.
Well, you may remember, I think you were on the board at the time, we had the village-wide referendum. And at that time, given the sources of water that were available, and, and that has changed, you know, over, over that period of time. But given the sources of water that were available, there was not any expectation that we would ever have the ability to have a cost-effective water system throughout the village. You know, we're just not dense enough to make that work. Some things have changed, and it might mean that we still would have some areas that were not served. But, you know, depending on how those things have changed and, you know, some of the economics of it, including fire protection issues that, you know, are kind of intangibles that could be factored in. Um, we, we might see some differences now than ten or, whatever it was, ten or fifteen years ago. But, but you're, you're, you're correct. That was, and we had that referendum that was soundly rejected in part because of that very analysis.
Well, it's like six thousand dollars a year on average per home for thirty years.
It was crazy.
It was crazy.
And that was just on the capital side. That wasn't talked about the end.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the numbers were way out of whack. But, um, you know, since we do have the, the toehold of a water system, the opportunity to increase capacity without having to increase the capital aspect of it, which is what the wa-, Lake Michigan water source would be, a, a lot of the changes need to be fully reevaluated. But at least there are some theoretical models that might lead to a broader expansion of the water system than what was ever contemplated initially.
Thank you, Vic. Thank you, Jeff.
Gosh, I'll open up some other subject if you'd like. Oh, there's this. Um, but two, two additional questions. One is, if you, you got Lake Michigan water, would the county then still require the well to be adapted?
Uh, no, because it would only be used on an emergency basis, so that does not need to comply with the treatment ordinance.
Okay. Does, does the radium, um, i- is, is there concern about the air quality from the radium?
That, that hasn't been brought up as far as, uh, what the county's looking at.
Because radium, radium is different than radon.
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 It's radon.
Radon is air quality.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so nobody's worried about the stores having radium, radium in their stores because of our water?
We treat it back, we treat it right now, the village does, you know, to extract and get it to a suitable level. Um, I E P A compliance, so there's no concern.
I believe, Jeff, we do that chemically right now, correct?
Yeah.
So, so that's not.
Radon is not.
Not an airborne emission. That's a, a chemical.
Well, no, it can be. It can be, unless you're treating it.
Right. That, that's, that's what we're doing now. We're chemi-
I understand that. I don't understand that. And one of the things that's very different today than five years ago is that we have this orgy of spending. And, and so nobody's looking at what the dollars are costing and what they're going to cost your grandchildren to, to pay for. So that, that's a big difference too. So we, we don't see any expenses too much.
Would we also need a, uh, well manager contract going forward if the wells are put into standby emergency use only? That eliminate our need for this continuous number thirteen on the balance?
Which means I have number thirteen on the balance.
I don't know.
I think that's, that's the question of the.
We still need a manager, and we still need to maintain that?
The water, the water operator issue. I, I think, I think that you still need a water operator issue.
That's what I was getting at, yeah. But, but is it the same amount, right? So.
Okay, so right now, the village has a, what's called ion exchange water treatment system, requires a class B water operator. Uh, that requires two things primarily to this discussion. One, the water operator has to come take samples at the treatment plant seven days a week. And the other thing is that there's a lot of chemical processes that have to happen. Uh, one being, uh, chlorine drip to it, the other is treating the radium and treating water hardness. If the Lake Michigan water connection occurs, uh, it goes from a class B, um, operator required to a class C. It's now a distribution system rather than a chemical treatment facility. So that would mean the, uh, water operator takes samples, uh, five days a week. So, uh, that reduces that. It can be four in some circumstances, so you're about a fifty percent reduction. And the, but, uh, the other thing is, the only chemical treatment that would need to happen is a minor chlorine drip. Um, you know, the water, the Lake Michigan water is, comes to our doorstep, if you will, you know, treated for hardness and, um, uh, the radium's been filtered out of it upstream. So there is cost savings there.
Well, that's, that's what I was getting at before, what, approximately what would be? Because we're, I mean, our water operating contract is what's, you know, operator contract is putting us in the red. So is it that much where it could make a difference in over a few years? You could pay for, if it was eighty-twenty, we could pay for the connection to Lake Michigan water and we'd get a payback? Just without even expanding it?
Yeah, I, you know, the number that I know right off the top of my head, um, you know, the, the chemicals, um, at the water treatment plant right now, per month are a thousand, eleven hundred dollars per month.
That's a lot, yeah.
So that, you know, that's twelve thousand a year. Um, but then, you know, the management, you know, sixty percent of.
Eighty-five on the new proposal.
So, that, so that ratchets that down a little bit, so, so.
We will not need the radium mitigation shelter or equipment should we go to Lake Michigan water, correct? So that's five hundred thousand dollars. It'd be six hundred thousand dollars contribution to the grant. Five hundred thousand dollars to the, um, radium mitigation with recurring costs for disposal.
Right.
Am I correct?
Such a bargain.
And it's not in residential well water?
It is.
So this, this is in the deep, deep well, thousand deep, and residential wells are in the shallow waterfront.
I mean, if you have a deep well, you may have it. Even if you have a shallow well, you may, but it's more common in the deep well sources.
I see. I see.
Just if you can answer quickly, what did the fields do when they had to resolve this?
All right, so, um, are we okay to pick a pause and keep moving? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, Apptekisik Road, the county has, uh, cleared the trees for the road widening project. There's, uh, distance if you drive on that. The Manager Jackson was telling us that you can see the line right now. Uh, Apptekisik Road, the, Lake Zurich is also completing their sanitary sewer lining project. Uh, additional delays on that. Uh, you had two contractors working in the same space. So, uh, the county contractor took priority. So, anyway, long story short, the sewer lining project should be done next week. Uh, let's see, and then, uh, just lastly, one other thing, Herbert Chase. Uh, there's a note that there's a meeting being scheduled, uh, to kick off the landscape, uh, I don't want to say management, addressing the deficiencies over there. So that meeting is scheduled, uh, per noon on Friday. Manager Jackson and myself will be talking with the executive director and, uh, their executives down in Florida on Friday to keep that up.
Twenty-two and eighty-three, do we talk about that? Is that meeting coming up?
Um, go ahead, bring it up or bring it under your report, but, um, go ahead. I mean, they.
We, we got contacted to have our discussions about the Route twenty-two and eighty-three, um, project. So we're trying to schedule that for the next couple of weeks.
But that's different from the Route twenty-two widening. This is one where they want to, uh, make the intersection, uh, have traffic flow through there better, you know, better so. Making the left turn lanes longer, right turn lanes, and so the traffic flows through there more efficiently.
Two, two left turn lanes, they're talking.
Yeah. And widening it up. But why, making those turn lanes longer too? Because that's one of the big issues going through there every day, is you've got to wait a light or so because you can't get up to the left turn lane. Anything else? Want to report? Thank you. So the, um, the next two items, probably need some help here, uh, and it's twelve and thirteen. Uh, they're counted together, uh, but they're two different items on the agenda. One is discussion and consideration approval of an ordinance amending Chapter one, Title three of the Long Grove Village Code regarding business licenses for temporary special events. And then the other one is, uh, discussion and consideration approval of an ordinance amending Section three dot two dot five of the Long Grove Village Code regarding temper-, temporary special liquor license. This is in regards to, um, Brothers Field. And, you know, basically bringing, um, that, uh, business in, you know, in comply, or bringing our code in compliance with the business, or however you want to look at it, or, or both. Um, and then the other thing is, you know, liquor license that would, um, you know, align with that. So I don't know if Vic or Village Manager Jackson want to say anything more than that, just to start the discussion.
Well, maybe just a, a little recap. You may recall, I think it was maybe two meetings ago, we had a presentation from Brothers Field about the redevelopment, uh, concepts. And, uh, the, the board expressed, uh, an interest in then moving forward with it. Um, one of the things that they had requested was to be continuing their operations that have occurred during the pandemic during, uh, the twenty-twenty-three, uh, season, if you will. Um, we've been doing this more or less on an ad hoc basis, based on some of the, uh, emergency pandemic, uh, actions. With those coming to a close next month, um, we really didn't have a peg to hang our hat on for that. And so what we, uh, are trying to do here is to provide some kind of peg that that activity can occur within the confines of our code. And there's two ordinances before you. One would be to create a business license for an outdoor entertainment, or what are we calling it, temporary, uh, special event venue. Um, lack of a better term for what they've been doing. Um, and this would be essentially to, to give them a business license so that they have, uh, standing, if you will, under our code for their activities. The second then is to give them a liquor license for that specific event. Importantly, um, both of these expire at the end of this season, so it's not something that's intended to be permanent. The redevelopment plan is supposed to, uh, take over after that. Uh, additionally, it still requires that the individual special events come to the board for approval, as they have been happening. Um, but it now puts it somewhere in the confines of our code, which it really hasn't been for the last three years. So that's, that was the concept of what's being presented to you and the context as well. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to address them.
Any questions?
Well, um, I, I had, I'm a, I was surprised when I read the ordinance that for special events, we allow alcohol from ten a.m. on Sunday and six p.m., um, ten to one to midnight on Saturday and five to midnight on Friday. I don't, I'm just surprised that you could start drinking at ten o'clock on Sunday morning. The church isn't even finished with.
Five o'clock somewhere, right? Uh, these, these times, um, were taken out of the PowerPoint presentation that Brothers Field, uh, uh, offered to the board, whatever it was, two meetings ago. This is not in the code currently. This is, uh, simply that we extracted what they were proposing and putting it before you. So the board wants to change this. We have that absolute right. The other aspect of this, even though we did incorporate the timeframes that were, that were in their PowerPoint, we also said that for any special event, the board can set up more restrictive timeframes. So we, we didn't just take what they gave us and, and ran. We reserve to the board the ability to, to further restrain those times.
Oh, I, I was under the impression that Section three, three dash two dash five is in our code.
Uh, the black lining, uh, is all new.
I see. Okay. I noticed it was on your mind.
Yeah, that, that's reflective of the proposed changes.
All right. So if I understand this correctly, the request is, if, if we approve this tonight, we basically are overriding what the, the C people have indicated. Is that correct?
What the architectural commission looked at was the redevelopment proposal, uh, concept, you know, design concepts. This is that interim activity for twenty-twenty-three. Um, so that, I, I think that the, you know, that there's, we're on parallel tracks. One is the redevelopment, which is going to the architectural commission, will go to the planning commission, will come to the board. Uh, and, you know, will then be the ability to, if it's approved, will give the ability to kick off the redevelopment activities. This is the stopgap for twenty-twenty-three.
Until the redevelopment starts?
It's only until twenty-twenty-three. If we wanted to have this extended, it would come back to you as another ordinance. It could be identical, but we were purposeful in only having it for twenty-twenty-three because at least in the PowerPoint presentation, the redevelopment will be, uh, moving into, uh, operational stages in twenty-twenty-four.
But as of this date, there are no architectural plans? There are no?
Correct. It's, it's still in the early stages of the redevelopment review and approval process.
And that has been the case for the last two years as well, is my understanding.
I, I, I think, you know, I think that there have been, I don't want to be disrespectful to, to the, uh, to the Brothers Field sponsors, but I think that it was more ideas as opposed to concepts. We now actually have some plans. They're not fully completed. They're not completed, you know, uh, they're, they're not fully, uh, delivered yet. But I, I think that they're farther along now than they were over the last couple of years.
So if, if we were to stay okay to this, then it's my understanding that if any of the other merchants wanted to have something similar, they would cite this as, well, it's a precedent. You know, if it's okay for them, why, can I do the same thing on, on my property? Is that, is that fair statement?
It would not be allowable because we only have one of these licenses, both for business and for liquor. Could they say, well, we want you to change it because the precedent's been set? Um, that would be an argument, but the board would say, no, we had a very specific intent to have it limited to this one site for this one period of time. And again, that's part of the reason why the Sunset provision is in here, so it doesn't have that kind of precedential effect.
Have we had, have we had input from? Have we had, have we had input from residents, customers, whatever, of this particular mode of doing business? Or other merchants?
There has been some discussion with other merchants who were were asking, was this going to be permitted? Were we moving forward with it? There have been residents who have consistently, you know, as we know, had concerns about the outside entertainment aspect of it, but yes, there's been comments.
Anyone else have questions, comments? Chris, I'm looking at you.
Thank you. I'm okay drinking at 10 o'clock on Sunday, but I am concerned about the 12 o'clock ending time and the concern from the residents that that has been expressed before. Is there enough appetite on the board to shrink these hours down? I mean, our sheriff is off the clock at 11 o'clock, right? So I don't want to encourage, you know, outdoor drinking events after 11 o'clock. We default to the sheriff's local coverage then. We don't have security in town.
Well, Vic said we could. He also said that each one of these events has to be filed as a special event, so we could limit it on those applications. There might be one where it makes sense to go to 12. I don't know.
So what what sets that precedence is this is a broad stroke, brush stroke, and then we narrow it one by one?
Right. This is the frame, if you will, for each of the individual pictures. We can, we can have individual timeframes. I I think though that if, you know, the the general sense of the board is that this is too long, the better approach is just make that very clear in the context of this ordinance, and we we can amend the times that are a more comfortable timeframe from the board's perspective.
Is there any appetite from board members to shrink the hours down a little bit or not?
Yes, I I am, I am too. I think 12, on on the one hand, I thank God they didn't ask for drugs, you know, because we're giving everything else. I think 12 is too late.
What's your number, bud?
11.
11, yeah. The cops go on duty, you know?
So I'd like to hear from also online here too, Jenny, Anne, Kent.
Yeah, I would support 11 p.m. as well. Just out of curiosity, our festivals go till 11, is that correct? The major festivals?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that would be consistent with the hours of the festivals. So, yeah, 11 would be fine.
I'm with Kent, this is Anne, I'm with Kent on the consistency. I do think that we keep kind of kicking the can down the road in terms of people have a difficulty with sound, but what do we really think about it? So I really would like to address that at some point, but I do agree with Kent on the consistency issue.
Thank you. Jesse Kitzmeyer, trustee Micho.
Agreed.
Okay, that means ditto or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it part of the problem with the the music that it's an open air? There's no, it's not a building. If they had a building on, the residents would hear it, and one goes hand in glove with the other.
Well, so let me just, yeah, so the, if I understand correctly, again, tonight, this is the framework, but each one of these events still has to be approved. So the issue with noise, sound and so forth, could come back before you write in form of an application for a special event.
We do this, we've done this before. Every year we talk about it. Every year the neighbors complain, every year we say, well, you know, and then the vendor says, well, no, you know, we've got the speakers on you then, we've got this, we've got that. The problem is it's an open air venue. Nobody else down there has that. You know, it kind of looks like a campground. You know, last year there was a trailer out there, and it's it's not, it's not what I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm saying it doesn't fit in. And the sound is because there's no building, for crying out loud. So, you know, when is, when is there, when are there going to be walls and a roof? Business, right?
Well, we can ask Jesse if he wants to comment on that at this point, come into the conversation.
Sure, what is the question?
When are you going to have a building?
Um, well, we, that was the architectural committee, we had, we had the full plans, but the concern with the historical building, we want some more due diligence, so, you know, we're open to trying to exhaust those options as early as we can. So that was the way, but that's the way that wasn't, we're ready to go, but it's the way to figure that out for them. As far as the outdoor space, I would stress that that is the attraction. You know, we're not going to enclose this 14,000 foot area. But what our goal is to do is to create an indoor space as well as outdoors. The outdoor will still be seasonal, and the indoor will be year round.
But there's no indoor now, that's the problem. And it's, it's, it continues and it continues. There's no foundation, there's no architectural plans. I I'm not really excited about it too much anymore because sooner or later, somebody else is going to come along and say, they can do it, why can't we do it? You know, it's not, it's not like you have a patio connected to an establishment. It's like a campground.
To go off of Vic's point, you know, we do have two parallel things going here. One would be the more permanent solution that would fit in line with the architectural committees and some of the concerns that are here, and the other one being the temporary one to help us get to that point. So, you know, what we're looking at tonight is more just for this season. It's not anything that would be the permanent solution. That's being dealt with on a completely separate track from tonight.
I know, and for me, that's the problem. It just, it's year after year after year. I have a problem with that.
So it looks like what we're discussing tonight is a transition between what's been done the past couple of years and what's planned to be done perhaps as soon as next year. So it's just a one-year transition we're talking about?
I think that's a fair characterization.
But but there'll always be the field. So the field is not going to have a roof on it or walls on it. It's going to be a field, not a campground, but a field, but but same effect.
That came from brought around 10,000 visitors last season alone.
And 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 I'll bet most of them were new.
A lot are new, our our top zones from our, because we have a tracking demographic for people to check in, our top zones, Buffalo Grove, Long Grove, Killdeer, and over on 21 here, Lake Zurich, yeah. So we do attract, and then from there, we pick up a lot of people from the city of Chicago. We have a lot of people love to get up here for the weekend, spend the day, so we get a lot of that, and then we get some tourists from Wisconsin north of us as well. But a lot of, a lot of great, I don't know how to explain it, our demographic is 35 to 65, mostly families with young kids. That was something we discussed with the architectural committee because they wanted a cattle gate that has the two. I mean, we had that on order, we were going to put it in, but that doesn't keep the little three-year-olds safe. We're right on the road, so a lot of the issues are in there. But again, we're just looking to get through this year. We are gone home, we do have plans, we've got about $50,000 into the red building as far as plans so far. We have not finished them because as recently this architectural committee, they say, you can't go the direction they're going, go another direction. So dump about 30 of that $50,000 into the trash and go in the direction. So there is some hesitancy in how quickly we get completed plans because it has been the case where we get pretty far and then find out we have to back up. That's one we can't recoup. So what we're doing is we're trying to take it step by step as it gets approved, then move and continue to do more. But it just, it sounded a little like a concern was us drinking our feet. It is not the case. We're, we're working with and the timeframes that we're being given. Very often, the architectural committee was rescheduling meeting after meeting. We've had reschedules that have gone 30, 60, 90 days. So the timeframe has largely been out of our hands. We're, we understand why, it's a new thing, but, can I say something? My name's John, I kick for the. Nope. I've been, I've had a shop in town three generations and not all by myself, I'm a middle generation. But when Brothers Field, you think about town, town used to be just a day town, back in the day, because it was all just a day town. And we got the the streetlights and we have the sidewalks, and now it's, now it's, you've got night and day, and night is starting to really pick up. And that's great, but the thing that we need in town is a destination breakfast, and we need like, Brothers Field brings families with dogs and grandparents. I mean, if you haven't been there to experience it, it's pretty cool. Fills our shops, fills our restaurants, and we have our best days when he has his Disney Day, or he has the Country Day, or we have the Blues Day or weekends. These are weekends, and parking was packed. Mike Margulies, what's going on? He's taking up all my spots. He gets mad, he comes down. But if you, there's so much to this that it just saying it's a campground is another, it's not true, it's more than that.
It looks like it can't go.
Bingo.
Yeah, so thank you, Jen, for that. One thing I do want to clarify, because I do know this, so when they were before the Architectural Commission, the question came up, because it was building a new building and tearing down the 1855 building, right? And the question came up by the Architectural Commission was, can you preserve that building? Is there any historical significance? So that's the the deviation, they wanted that to be investigated first before, you know, a decision to to build a new building, right? And I think it, it's part of what they're charged to do too, you know, in their charter is to look at these things. So I think that's what Jesse was saying, which may or may not delay, because who knows if that building can be salvaged or what the historical significance of it is, is we don't know yet. That's the stuff that will have to be investigated, so.
But what I don't, what I have a hard time with is why not work together? Why not collaborate instead of, you know, spending 50 grand and finding out 30 of it was wasted? Is there, is there a way that you can collaborate better so that doesn't happen?
I think there's, I think when you, anytime you're dealing with a development, you go through the the concept to the pre-plan and then get to the commissions, whether it's the Architectural Commission or the PCZVA, there's going to be questions and asked to go back and tweak and 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 do something else. This concept, it's the genesis of this concept was, you know, make a venue sort of like an outdoor ravina, and it's took various shapes and forms, and and it got to the first stop, which was the Architectural Commission that both Taylor believed that's where it needed to go so it would not be languishing behind the PCZVA. So he tried to, quite honestly, accelerate things a little bit. The, in my opinion, the Architectural Commission did exactly what they were supposed to do, and I think it was well handled, and and there were suggestions offered on different things that could be looked at that would make this more acceptable to the Architectural Commission and then move forward to the PCZVA. But anytime their plans are being done, at least in my experience, there's going to be something that, you know, says, you got to go back and do this, or take another look at this, or we're not, you know, this isn't within our code and move it forward. Yeah, exactly.
It is unfortunate, though, when meetings get canceled, that that, and 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 therefore the the petitioner gets delayed and delayed. Anybody who's been through here knows that happens frequently.
I want to make sure there's no other comments too, Chris, you.
You're kidding me again.
I know, you just have a look, so I'm not sure what that means.
The word transition bothers me as well. I don't see this as a transition to a future tiki bar. I think, though, having said that, I know Jesse's been a really good partner of the villages, and it's been a tough few years. I think it's important for them to continue in business so that they could fund that wonderful indoor venue. I don't see the village of Long Grove being a host of tiki bars, I just don't see it. So, you know, for me, this is a temporary, one-year thing. I will not support an outdoor tiki bar in Long Grove. I'm just telling you that right now. You're going to have to get four other votes or five other votes, whatever. I just don't see it. It's not Long Grove. I got your point, I love it, I love that we're able to bring visitors in to get that, but I just don't see it. It's not my, not my cup of tea. Having said that, I'll go ahead and move both of these forward with the modification of the time adjustment from 12 to 11 p.m.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee Broowski, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee Broowski, what's the motion?
To approve both 12 and 13.
With 13 being adjusted to reflect the 11 o'clock rather than midnight.
So we're continuing the motion.
Well, yes, we could.
We have a live motion, so go ahead and.
I just need to understand.
It's, so it's basically approving both of these, only only modifying the hours to go to 11 o'clock from 12 on Saturday and Sunday.
But it's another year of tiki bars. Isn't it a season?
Season, yes.
Friday and Saturday, right?
Well, it's, correct. It's only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The other day is 6 p.m.
Yeah.
Sunday.
I don't know which question you were asking, but it's, yeah.
That's it, you've answered it.
Okay, got it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Broowski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you. Just Chris, your thing, the, when we met with Architectural Committee, tiki bars, we're not able to practice in any way, so we're going to, it would be more permanent structure of it, so this is the last six months, you know, to stay.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so moving on, discussion of planning and zoning and inspection services for fiscal year 23, 24?
I I just need to bring to the attention of the board, and I touched on it at the previous board meeting, our last board meeting, that the village of Mundaline, who has been a very good partner for us in providing planning services, planning and zoning as well as inspection and code enforcement. The planning and zoning side of the house has, we've been informed of an increase in billing of 40%. And that that increase, I wanted to go out and shop and see what else was out there. Lake County, I approached Lake County, and first of all, let me say this, that staff believes, and we had a conversation with trustee Tanucci on this too, for because of buildings oversight. We, the staff believes that it is more effective to have planning and zoning with code enforcement and inspections versus having them split up because so often, what one body does, another body gets, or what one group does, another group gets involved with. So we looked at, I looked at Lake County, I talked to the county administrator as well as the head of their buildings department, they can do some of it, but not all of it because of personnel logistics. I reached out to my colleagues in the area and Kildare recommended their private contractor to do the planning, zoning and inspections. The skill set that we would need for here and the technology that we would be asking them to use, they were, in our eyes, not, would be difficult for them to get up to speed to do it. We then approached a company that I understand was here before, and there may have been some issues with that company, which was BNF. BNF has been a leader in the industry. In fact, they have an academy where a lot of the inspectors go out and train at. I understand that some of the inspectors were a little bit over, were overly aggressive in doing their jobs last time they were here, but staff assures me that overall, they performed well. I would like to bring back to the board at the next meeting, a contract on BNF for consideration. Part of this too is that Mundaline has, they're buried, they are quite honestly buried with what they have over at their place. We've had up to four weeks on plan reviews, waiting on plan reviews. We've been limited to inspections till only the morning. Mundaline provides that service for us and Hawthorne Woods, I don't know who else beyond that, but there have been some constraints on that staff, or limitations, I should say, on that staff as well, which, again, when they perform and they're out there performing which, again, when they perform and they're out there performing, they're exceptionally good at what they do and they've been great partners. But we need a little bit more for our village. We need quick to turn around. Somebody shouldn't have to wait four hours for an inspection, but have a call ahead so that the contractors there and the homeowners not waiting four hours or the contractors not waiting four hours. And we need the flexibility to do all day versus only in the mornings. I talked to the village administrator in Mundaline and he quite honestly told me if they were, if we were to stay, they would have to hire up. So that tells me right now that their resources are at limit or stretched. And I looked at the dollars. The dollars are comp on inspections and codes and it's, the planning and zoning is based on volume, but pretty much comparable to what we're paying now, just a little bit more.
What are we paying now? It had, not per inspection, but the total.
Yeah, I have it in the budget. It's, we're paying for the zoning and planning, I think sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis. Our inspections, I have to go back and look, but I think eighty thousand rings to me for the inspection services. Again, I have to check those numbers. I've got them here.
Is that a headcount?
I don't understand which.
And obviously hire our own engineer at a school.
Well, I, that's a great point and I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. I put out an ad for a planner in December and got limited responses, including responses that didn't look like they read the job posting. I posted it again through the ILCMA through January and part of February, received some responses. Some of them are well credentialed but lacking experience, especially for something like Long Grove where PUDs are important and our unique zoning code to some extent.
A couple of years ago, you also talked about the possibility of like virtual inspections. Have we made any progress on that?
Yeah, we started doing some of them with Mundaline and we wanted to turn around and expand that and BNF can do that.
Anybody else do that besides BNF to limit BNF exposure? I mean, we were not happy with BNF, period.
You know, I'm searching my memory and I'm, oh, yeah. And I, there was somebody else involved at the same time. There was another company that we were using too. One was doing here and one was doing the rest. And I'm confusing the stories. All I know is we weren't happy.
Not with BNF, I was not happy with them.
They were rude.
And it's one thing if the inspector was the problem, but if the company was the problem, that's a no-brainer.
If you put that into the private sector, it becomes a profit center for them. I'm gonna nitpick and flunk and every inspection I can so I get them. You're keeping revenue stream, right?
Yeah, but it was.
So how do we police that? So if they came to us with a contract, I mean, how do you police it? How do you incentivize them without cutting?
Compromising, right.
Right, I just don't know how you do it.
Yeah, I think, I think we can monitor that. I think we can turn around and see, okay, if somebody keeps going out to the same property or we see the same inspector doing multiple inspections where we're kind of like, why are you doing three inspections? I think there's a way to monitor it. I mean, we look, we do the same thing with Mundaline because it's inspection-based too. I mean, we do, we do the same thing with them.
I get, I get that, but that's more of a public sector enterprise, right? And it's totally different than being beholden to your shareholders' ownership or profit.
And I would tell, I would say this, and I can only speak for this experience with Mundaline. They have done exceptionally well for us. Their people are like part of our team, but they have limitations and I don't know if that serves our constituency well. Those limitations, being able to be flexible, being able to call ahead, being able to do some of that. It doesn't seem that that ability exists right now for Mundaline. I could go back and revisit that. If we want to bring out another company to, I looked at BNF because they are a leader. I mean, everybody, all my colleagues know BNF, we're familiar with them. I can't speak to what happened here. Maybe it was a bad management team on the site. You know, I can't speak to that. But happy to look at somebody else. If the dollars were right, I would not be asking the board to even consider anything because, and if the service was right to what we needed to do. We had much more flexibility when we had somebody in-house. There's no doubt about it, at least by, you know, from what I understand, as far as with planning and zoning, which is the part that we, you know, most recently sent out to Mundaline.
If Mundaline is, would look at having to hire, what is the harm in that? If they would, if they would hire an additional staff person or two and if we, we would, of course, in some way have to guarantee a contract. But what is, if we're happy with Mundaline, why would we be reluctant to suggest that?
They're asking for forty thousand dollars more a year.
And I don't, from what I read and know about what's going on in Mundaline, their building situation's only gonna get bigger. You know, they keep, they've got three of those huge buildings at the main plaza going up.
They have a number of opportunities in front of them that they're working on, yes.
Seven thousand homes, you know, on the Words estate, you know, that's, that's, they're building an empire over there. So what would be, would there be an opportunity with Deer Park or Hawthorne Woods?
Hawthorne Woods uses Mundaline.
But what's the problem with an empire if we might actually benefit from the scale?
They don't have time for us.
But we still, no, but that's part of a contract. I'm sorry, Bobby.
No, it's coming somewhere else.
No, you, we're on the same page.
Okay, I just, you know, if we benefit from the scale, we make sure that we've got the right provisions in the contract we like.
Yeah, but they want forty thousand more for including us. I don't know how that's benefiting.
But if, but if we, if we hired somebody, think about a fully loaded employee with healthcare, benefits, retirement and everything else, that may still be a good trade.
But what are the, what's the cost revenue? You know, if you're paying forty thousand more for permits, we have to increase what we're charging the rent?
I'm just saying, I, that's a fair point. I just say, my gut is that in a contract with Mundaline, we can make it a little more variable. If we have a full-time employee, it's not variable, it's fixed.
It'd be fixed. It's, it's straight, right now, we're having to fix them out right now.
There's no discussion.
So when does the decision have to be made by? What is this?
Well, it's, it's, it's taken us a little bit of time to review different potential vendors or government partners. Like us, Mundaline, Mundaline has their budget due on May first. I had told the village administrator I would get back to them within this week to have a conversation on what direction we're going. I can go back if the board's saying. And if we turn around and take Mundaline and this person is housed at Mundaline for a thousand dollars a year coming out of our pocket, and are we getting fifty percent of that? Are we getting sixty percent of that? Yeah, I don't know. There was a period where it was very, very slow because we didn't have much on our plate. The advantage too of Mundaline, and there's no doubt about it, is they've gotten very familiar with how we do our codes, given us a good look at some things and saying, you might want to change this, you might want to change that. They have a sense of what's acceptable to the board and the A.C. and the PCZBA. There are some positives of it. It's the dollar amount and if the board is amenable to that, if the board is supporting that, we can certainly go back and meet with Amanda and Eric over there and discuss terms.
So let me just tell you my.
Deer Park, that's amazing.
Deer Park has, I'd have to double check, but I have to go back to my notes, but I think Deer Park's using BNF.
So let me just say one thing. I am petrified about making a change right now without having a solid plan. And that is my biggest issue because, you know, we change contractors or don't have a contractor for the newsletter. We don't need to end up in the same situation where we're, end up in a worse spot. So it might be better, if we're gonna make a change, it needs to be planned out more and maybe there's an exit clause or whatever with Mundaline so that we.
We have that.
Have that time so that we're not, because we're putting our village at risk if we don't have a good, solid system for planning and inspections. So that's my biggest, it's bigger than the forty grand extra we're gonna spend. That's my worry.
Is the forty thousand just an inflationary number?
It was explained to me that in order for them to properly compensate staff for the additional work, they would need an increase from us. So in essence, it's to increase the salaries for their staff.
It sounds like we currently have a proposal or soon will have a proposal from BNF. We know what we have with Mundaline. We know what they're asking in the future. Would it be useful to look at what BNF is proposing so at least we can compare the two from a number standpoint, from a functionality standpoint? If we ultimately decide the Mundaline is the way we want to go, that's fine. But I feel like we're making a decision without looking at the second alternative first before making that decision.
You're speaking from a dollar standpoint. We had terrible problems with them.
Well, also from, you know, not just dollars. I'm also talking about what they can provide us, perhaps what they can provide that Mundaline cannot. And I don't know if there is anything because I haven't seen the proposal. And that's my point. You can't choose between two alternates if you haven't looked at the second alternate yet.
But unfortunately, we have looked at the other alternate. We know the other alternate.
So we know the history is something.
I was on the board there.
I, I, I think instead of vilifying them, I think we need in writing, and I don't know whether it needs to come from you, I don't, or Chuck would certainly have a story to tell. So that we're, we're on solid ground in thinking what we recall.
Yeah.
So just, just to be clear, I'm not advocating for one or the other. I'm just saying it's good to fully understand the options before we pick one. And right now, we only understand one of the two options.
Kind of like when your parents tell you not to touch the soul when you go do it anyway.
That's what I wanted to bring to the board is the BNF proposal and the Mundaline proposal. But if the board says no against BNF, then I'll take a different vote.
So, so, I mean, you can bring them to the board. I don't know that it's gonna change anything, right? So, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for everyone, but Trustee Chris Meyer, what do you think?
So I, I agree with Kent in terms of the, like, we need to evaluate both sides. I really do think, you know, it's a bitter pill to swallow to go from sixty to a hundred, but at the end of the day, we can't hire that person, we can't hire someone at a hundred. If you think about fully loaded, everything this, that and the other thing, I think there is some benefit with staying with Mundaline and, to your point, President Jacob, making a little bit more of a longer deliberative evaluation.
Yeah, thank you. And Trustee Micho, I want to make sure I give Trustee Micho a chance to say something, so.
I don't have the history with the other company. I would like to see their numbers, but I also agree with Ann. I feel that a hundred thousand dollars does, I mean, that's, we either look for somebody to work for us, which is gonna cost more than that and then that, I'm assuming the hundred thousand also includes the inspections, which would not include just an employee as a planner, so.
No, it does not.
I think we have, right, so I guess I would like to see a comparison, just number-wise, but, I mean, I feel like Mundaline's been doing a good job for us, so.
The hundred thousand, trustee, does not include the inspections.
The hundred thousand does not. Oh, okay.
So apples to apples, neither did the sixty.
Okay, so, so, I mean, go ahead, Rita, yeah.
Even if we pay Mundaline forty thousand dollars more, and I'm not opposed to getting a proposal from BNF, I just think fool me once. Shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me, you know? They're kind of a known entity to us. But what are realistic expectations even if we pay Mundaline forty grand more? Are we still gonna have residents having to sit there playing with their musical instruments for four hours, waiting for somebody to show up? You know, are they gonna get a phone call within that four-hour period saying, I'll be there in thirty minutes or I'll be there forty minutes? Or is it gonna, is it gonna be more of the best we can do? You know what I mean? Is that, is the forty grand gonna buy us what we've had or is it gonna?
Improve.
Or is it gonna be worse? You know what I mean?
Yeah, good question. Does the forty thousand maintain status quo or does it get us something extra?
No, that's a fair question. We should put a service level agreement in place that we like.
To the extent it helps the conversation, assuming that the agreement with Mundaline follows the same general terms as the existing one, we have a thirty-day notice provision to allow us to exit that agreement. So apropos the concerns about do we have an appropriate transition plan in place, maybe the thing to do would be to, for now, plan on extending the contract with Mundaline at the increased cost, recognizing, A, that we have an, we have an alternative to get out if we find a better path and B, if we don't, then we have somebody in place to provide the service. So I offer that as a observation.
Amanda from Mundaline's on the line tonight. Amanda, do you have a comment that you wanted to share with us? You're muted, by the way, too. Can you unmute yourself?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was afraid my children would run in. So, yeah, I know you guys have a lot of questions about, you know, where the money would go and what, you know, what this all entails. And, you know, I just wanted to speak a little bit about, like, when we started this, you know, it was, we had somebody retiring and, you know, we wanted to step in and help a neighbor out and really, you know, just do a good job like we would for any of our community members. And as time has gone on, you know, we definitely feel like you guys are a great neighbor and community. We definitely feel, like Greg said, a part of the Long Grove family. You know, our costs have certainly gone up. There's also a strain on the staff that we do have because, you know, not only do we have the night meetings of our village, we also do night meetings for your village. And so we don't do them all the time, granted, but asking the staff that we have to do more meetings in the evenings is certainly something that we have to, you know, look at and consider. And, you know, we definitely, Taylor did get promoted to a senior planner this year and he got a raise with that promotion. Our cost of living as a village has gone up with that. And so, you know, at the end of the day, you have to weigh out, like, you know, what makes this worth continuing to do? And I think that we have a lot of records of, you know, all the service that we've provided. I've got timelines, I've got, you know, all the things that we have done and I'm happy to share that with anybody. It really is your decision. We're happy to continue the service and we will continue to provide, you know, the best of our abilities, what you need, but if you want to go with somebody else, you know, we're not hurt by that. We certainly understand that you're doing the best for your residents. So I just wanted to make that statement.
So, so let me do this. I guess, I'm sensing that there's enough support, correct me if I'm wrong, to continue with Mundaline. That doesn't mean we cannot look at alternatives, but that probably the safest bet is to signal, hey, this is what we're gonna do and then if something changes and we see something better, then we, you know, talk to them about it. But I don't, I don't, I don't think we should throw the towel in right now, but that's just my opinion.
I'd ask for a six-month permission to turn around, a six-month extension with Mundaline at the rate increase as Vic suggested and then see where that takes us. And allow me to also go back and talk about our concerns that staff has had, more so on the inspection side than on the planning side because it's more activity there. But, you know, some of the delays on the planning side are of concern according to staff lately, so.
Everyone okay with that?
I would, I would agree. And by the way, I think that the Mundaline people, the people have been really quite good partners to us. I really do think from a cultural standpoint, that's been a good fit and I appreciate that.
Amanda mentioned about. Amanda mentioned about nighttime meetings, and I couldn't agree with her more. And I think we need to consider whether maybe it's once a month rather than twice a month. And adapt ourselves to a better time with them. But certainly, we need to have good service for our inspections.
Yeah, I don't, I agree with you, I don't know why Jeff has to sit through.
Exactly.
Once we have the report, and I don't know why Amanda has to sit through all of this waiting for.
I think she, I was here tonight purposely, Amanda hasn't been in these meetings for a while.
Oh, I see.
But, but, but don't miss my point, and it's true of Jeff, too. Is that we need to be a little more adaptive. We need to be able to take our agenda at the beginning, and if somebody's here, pull them in in the first of the meeting, instead of making them sit through hours of us babbling.
Well, Taylor, I understand he's online.
No, we can probably let him go at this point, yeah.
Sure is spending.
No, but I think for part of the other discussion before this, you know, he did a part of that, so.
I understand.
Yeah, and this one he probably wanted to listen into, too. But, I mean, do we have enough, just six months, everyone okay with that?
No, under the current agreement, there's no cancellation penalty, it's just that the notice and any cost incurred to that point will be paid.
If there's no objections, let's proceed with that. All right, then I guess Taylor and Amanda, you can leave, too. Thank you.
Turn off.
All right, now we're, this is on the consideration and approval of a resolution extending a contract for village landscape agreements with Milu Design Inc. It's only six hundred dollars more. Any discussion?
Do we bid this?
This was an extension of the existing contract that was bid out three years ago, I believe.
So it needs to be, it needs to be bid?
For next year, this is an option to extend.
And they haven't raised the rates in three years, despite the inflationary environment. And right now, they're only asking for six hundred bucks, which is less than the rate of inflation.
Yes, the contract without the extension requires that we go out to bid.
You do a nice job.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion.
Well, it was moved by trustee O'Connor, and do you want to second it?
Sure, I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci.
Yeah, trustee.
Just to clarify, we're absolutely, positively going to rebid this next year?
Yeah, the contract allows for a one year extension, it has to go to bid. I wasn't here.
This has been going on a number of years.
Because we had people who had been with us.
Yeah, but this one's been a while now, so.
This is the fourth of the extension, here's four out of.
Yeah, I don't remember.
If I remember, it goes back to like twenty fifteen or sixteen.
Our village clerk, Schmitky, you want to take roll call?
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
All right, motion carried.
Is Jeff Burke not here tonight?
Who?
Jeff Burke is on.
I don't see him here tonight, so.
Well, I mean, I don't either, but I just want to.
Yeah, his appointment's with. Does Jeff need to stay, or is he allowed to go? Jeff, is there anything else for Jeff? I don't think so, right?
Do you want to? I was sticking around for the CIP discussion.
Oh, yeah, you need to be here for that, yeah, good point, so.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk about the budget amendment, right? So who's gonna run with that? Is that you?
Go ahead. After looking at our budget, this is the time of the year where we make adjustments to the budget for unexpected expenses and adjustments to lines that needed adjustments for revenue expenditure purposes. Increases or decreases. Some of the big numbers you see here is, you know, furnace replacement for seven thousand dollars, that was an unexpected cost. We also had, I think it's on the second page, ninety seven thousand dollars, this was the IDOT invoice from 2014 for the Oakwood Road Bridge. That came into us, and I ran it past Jeff, and I ran it past Vic to see if we were still obligated, and we were, we are obligated on that twenty seven, twenty seven thousand. I'm sorry, ninety seven thousand four eighty eight.
Which page are you on?
Second page of the amendment. Fifty three hundred for a well pump replacement, we had to do parcel acquisition of five thousand dollars, that was part of the Stimple project. Twenty seven thousand three hundred is for Buffalo Creek plantings that occurred in, occurred this year, but as part of the intergovernmental agreement in either 2020 or 2021, early 2021. Road signs and traffic calming, and some of that we're gonna adjust because all of the money for one reason or another was placed into one line when it should have been split up into a second line. Where we had a budget agreement.
Could I, yes, the ninety seven thousand, how did that get lost in the system?
My recollection is that there were two factors. One, the original project cost exceeded what was the estimate.
Okay.
And that's where the actual number went. We had, as I understood, reserved a smaller amount to pay for what was expected, and IDOT never billed. And so at some point, that fund that had been reserved to pay for what was expected was simply folded back into the fund balance and not.
Do we know when that was done?
I'm sorry?
Do we know when that was?
I, there was a discussion about it three meetings ago, maybe, but, or in Greg's memo. Let's see if I can pull that up.
When the money was tucked away back into the fund, it was twenty ten or something. No, it was twenty twenty.
Oh, okay.
It was five years after the project.
Yeah, so, I mean, IDOTs don't.
Why didn't anybody catch, I, I'm just curious. It's not as if it was a buck twenty five. I mean, to lose that amount of cost is just surprising.
Isn't there some statute of limitations? I mean, somebody come back twenty years later and say, hey, you know, we never charged it for the bridge repair?
There is.
I agree, sorry.
So it's a longer period of time?
It's a ten year.
Oh, ten years, okay.
The time that work was done, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a really, that's a really important thing for boards to understand, Vic, because boards are elected every four years. And to understand that we have a clawback for every ten years. Honestly, I don't think there's a thing we can do, so I think we should proceed, but it's a good thing for a learning opportunity.
And I'm not suggesting that we don't pay it, I just want to learn from it.
I totally agree.
And why an audit or something somewhere didn't pick it up is just surprising.
So we were hitting the statute of limitations, and that's why it happened.
My guess is that somebody, somebody had a, oh, my gosh, moment at IDOT, and that's when the bill went out.
This is from twenty fourteen, so.
Yeah. Nine years.
Okay, again, we can fiddle away hours on a thousand dollars, but ninety seven just thrown out the door.
We have no choice.
Sorry, Kent, I stepped on you.
You just said, we have no choice, we have to pay it.
Does anyone want to, go ahead. Go ahead, Bobby. If not, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I will.
Okay, so trustee O'Reilly did, and then do you want to, do you want to second it, Jenny?
Sure.
Trustee Micho, second it. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski. Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, so what we've been waiting for is the discussion of the capital improvement plan for twenty three, twenty four. This is, what, the first reiteration of it, right? So first draft of it.
The, I provided the board's plan in the transmittal memo, it's in the packages. Want to talk about the various areas of the fund for this year and the potential spending from the general fund, or money that would need to be used out of the general fund. We've got four hundred, for fiscal year twenty three and twenty four, we've got four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, four thousand, four hundred and sixty thousand seventy one dollars for the village hall rehab. That is allocated from ARPA dollars, not general fund dollars, or requesting general fund dollars. A hundred thousand dollars from RPC Bridge Repairs, that was the, what Jeff pointed out today with the contract, or with the bid proposal. One point two million for road maintenance covered by infrastructure dollars and MFT dollars. And so that comes out of the infrastructure fund and the MFT fund. Twenty thousand dollars for pathway plan, that's discretionary. Sixty two thousand seven hundred and thirty six of obligated funds for the expansion of Apptekisak Road, so that's an obligation we have to fulfill. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the water extension on Apptekisak, that was what I discussed with the board at the last meeting about potentially running water distribution across Apptekisak to where the new firehouse is going to be. The firehouse referendum, we'll know more about come next Tuesday. Fifteen thousand for EBCs, and we're looking to fund that through grants, not through general fund money. We need our server and the security for that server has aged out. Seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars. And then twenty thousand dollars for computer equipment for elected officials, laptops or tablets, where we got an quote from Heritage on that and being able to set that up already. So a hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and ninety two thousand dollars obligated for repair maintenance. Three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in discretion for a total of discretionary, for a total of five hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and ninety two dollars. Also want to, at risk of getting yelled at, I will also remind the board that the potential for keep on our radar if we get the grant from the federal government, that'll be six hundred thousand dollars that would, we would look to put somewhere into the capital improvement plan, probably in twenty four, twenty five. So if the board's comfortable with it, we'd like to take the, either the hundred and eighty thousand, one ninety four, or the total five hundred and seventy one ninety two, and put it into, or take it from general fund dollars in order to make the capital.
So Greg, this is Ann. Can you hear me? I guess the basic question is, do we want to fund the full road construction project that, the road construction plan for this year that we discussed? Do we want to wait on the federal government discussion that you mentioned? This is the time for comments on all kinds of things. Because we need to finalize this by May first, we've got a month. The big question is, how does this board feel about shifting some money from general fund to make sure that we fund the full twenty twenty three road construction plan that was envisioned many years ago? Or do we want to wait in compassion and then adjust roads? Is that fair?
Well, the road dollars would be coming from MFT, for the road maintenance that Jeff has set up for this year, it's gonna come from MFT dollars and infrastructure dollars.
Right.
And that combined would make up the one, one point two million.
Okay, all right, so what action does the board need to take tonight?
I need, if the board tells me that we can use five hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and ninety two from the general fund to purchase or do the capital improvements for the bridge repairs, the Apptekisak Road expansion, the pathway plan, water extension, server replacement, and computer equipment, that's what I'm looking for. So I can incorporate it to the final budget numbers.
Perfect, and so just to remind everybody, we need to finalize this budget by our two meetings from now, we have two meetings in April, we need to finalize this by our second meeting in April.
Finalize it by the next one.
I have no questions and no comment.
Chris, you're looking again.
Does that mean that there is no consideration for reevaluation of the road paving plan at all? Based on the accelerated plan that we've already implemented, the addition of reclamation, all that, you know, we're just not gonna consider?
Chris, this question from a few meetings ago, or are we just, I'm just, our arms up and say, we're sticking to the plan, come hell or high water?
Guess that's my question, are we doing anything, or are we just go with the plan? Because my fears is that when all of these roads go belly up at the same time, you know, we're eight, nine, ten years from now, we're not gonna have enough money to redo all the roads at one time, and that's my fear.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually disagree with you on that one. So the fact that we've been doing a little bit at a time, and the fact that we're doing the full depth reclamation, and the fact that we're doing the reclamation, and when we get done, yes, we're gonna have to start doing some other ones, but we've done it over a period of fifteen years. It's not all gonna have to be done at once, in fact, we may get a little bit of a break because they're gonna be holding up, and that's something we'll have to evaluate. But we've never done the type of repair work on the roads that we did this last go around. And I'll let Jeff even comment if he wants.
No, that's good.
I mean, I fully, I fully believe, I fully believe that, I believe that so much, because I had the roads, and that's the only reason I'm in office, is because of those roads, because they were gonna levy a property tax to pave, you know, the roads, and HOA's that had their roads, you know, subsidized or paid for by the village, and that was not, in my opinion, was totally not fair, so getting way out in front of this and getting this done, in my opinion, is like priority number one, and getting it out of the way, and I know they're gonna, we're gonna have to go back and do it again, but I think we're, it's gonna be a lot, lot longer time in between, just based on how we did it and all the things we're doing, so that's my opinion.
Fair, fair, but doesn't it make sense for us to see the map on that and what that road plan looks like based on the increased longevity or the roads that have been accelerated, and just put it on paper? So we see the vision based on the useful life of each road, if someone was done?
Isn't that the conversation we had?
Well, that's my question, so if, if, if we're not doing that, then I'd just like to know that.
We're not gonna do any of that?
That's all I want to know, that's my question.
I'm looking at Jeff, because we need some help here.
Yeah, you know, what's in the CIP now is, you know, the completion of the fifteen year program that was adopted in twenty fourteen. So, you know, moving forward, what it looks like, you know, there's the next go around. You know, is it, is it a fifteen year cycle, is it a twenty year cycle, or a twenty five year cycle? No, I had the discussion with, with the next part of, hey, you know, let's look at.
No, we never, we never finished that discussion. You were going to provide certain information. I've never seen it.
Well, that's my question. And the other question is.
So are we gonna ever get that answer, those answers, are we ever gonna see? I recall one of my questions was, does it matter whether it's a, that's used a lot or a little? Does it matter, does the reclamation last longer?
I brought that up, too. Yeah, no, it was the questions of that, and when is the second year application? Yeah, that too, yeah. You know, I don't have the answers for those tonight, you know, we.
Are we ever gonna get those answers?
Yes, yes.
And if I, if I might just jump in, on the capital improvement plan, as well as the budget, because we are a budget officer, a commission and levy community, we have a lot more flexibility. The capital improvement plan is just that a plan, you can change it as and when you need to. The budget is a little, first of all, it's a shorter horizon, so it's a little less flexible. less flexible, but we have the ability to change it as time goes by. When we get bids, those are based on estimates. If the bids end up being out of whack, either favorably or unfavorably, we make the decision then. And then, as we just did earlier tonight, at some point in the budget year, we do a look back and say, where did things miss the mark from what we had projected at the outset? So we have more flexibility under the system that we're currently under than we did, I think we changed to the budget officer about 10 years ago. And what, what this means is that we're setting a course, but that course is not immutable. And it's really up to the board based on information that you'll get from time to time, based on bids that we get from time to time to make the change. So I, I think that your concerns are things that need to be addressed. I don't think that they are an obstacle to approve a capital improvement plan and a budget for the upcoming fiscal year and the five years because those can all be revisited to a degree.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. My, you know. But you're asking for guidance and feedback from the, from the board. I hear numbers like $20,000 for a pathway study. I don't know what that 20,000 is for. But if we could, if we had the, the plan for what, what everything looks like and stuck to the plan, then we can also determine how much more money we could pull in for other uses beside repaving roads that may not need it in 10 years or whatever. You know, if we could allocate some of that today's budget for the benefit of the entire village beside paving some roads, which I get it, are our obligation, but essentially may not impact all of the residents per se. Indirectly, indirectly, of course, but, but then we could budget more money for other uses. And that's what I'm trying to get to. If we don't need to be repaving roads over and over and over again, which I know we're not, but unless we, unless I can see what that looks like based on the acceleration factors, based on reclamation number one, reclamation number two, the extended life of those roads now, how do you plan? How do you say, Rita, I mean, I want to put 40 more grand into your, into your pathways this year. How do you plan? Unless, unless you're thinking through that, how do you do it? That's where my question comes from. It's rhetorical, not expecting an answer.
Not tonight anyways.
Right.
Maybe not never.
Well, maybe not never.
Maybe not never. Grammatically incorrect, but maybe not never. Thank God I've got a bad memory.
I don't know about that.
What are you asking for? What do we need to do tonight?
Yeah.
I'm asking the board if I can take the 50,000, or I'm sorry, 570,192 and incorporate, incorporate those purchases and capital improvements into the 23, 24 budget for the upcoming year.
Well, we haven't approved that budget.
No, and we won't. We're not there yet. But I want to, I want to, so I can give a final budget for approval, I'd like to incorporate those numbers into the budget.
So, so you can see the trade-offs if he does that?
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, I got it.
Just some direction.
Okay, fine. Shoulder shrug.
I mean, sure, why not? We haven't approved the budget because of our, so.
All right. Bobby?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I will point, I will point out to everybody that we are right now running an excess on our budget. That excess has a whole lot of things that we've discussed for it, but this is a very good one.
Okay, so you're supportive, Kent?
Yep, I support.
Jenny? I can't hear you.
Jenny went to bed.
No, no, she's still there. Jenny, you're muted. All right. If you come back, Jenny, please provide an opinion.
Um, I'm sorry. I, I switched over to Zoom and I'm on Nick's. I just got home. So I hung up and now I'm on Nick's Zoom.
Yes, and did you say you're okay?
Yeah. I, I missed a little bit when I hung up and before I could reconnect, but yes, I, I'm for it. Thanks.
Okay. No, thanks, thanks Jenny. Thanks for being here. Okay, so then we're going to move on, discussion of the draft budget. So who's leading that discussion?
The only funds that are not part of this draft budget are the two TIFs in the business district that I'm going to sit down with trustee Kritzmeyer tomorrow and our accountant just to verify our numbers and projections. The main, the main funds are, one of the, are, have been provided to the board to give some highlights. The fiscal year 22, 23 amended to projected, this, this year's budget, we will show, we are projected to have a 15% increase in revenues and a 16% decrease in expenditures from, from the budget. 84% positive net increase of $592,716. Some revenue highlights based on projections, we're going to see a 49, we're, projections based on IML numbers, we're looking at a potential 49% increase in cannabis use tax, a 38.7% increase in Illinois income tax, and 120% increase in local use tax with looking at increasing some transactions that the state has provided, estimates. Our, we're projecting a 17.4, a 17.14% increase in revenues from the amended budget to the projected budget. So what we're seeing here is we're projecting $4,023,020 in revenues for, for the end of this fiscal year, but we budgeted only $3,415,000 with revenues. So we're anticipating seeing a surplus of, at the end of the year, between net revenues and expenditures of 1.2 million dollars. We're looking to, our budget was 3.2 million in expenditures. We're looking at a projection of coming in at 2.7. So we did some, did some good managing as, as a team. The cash available at the beginning of the year of, of this fiscal year was 4.3 million. We're projected balance of 1.2 million with a reserve starting 23, 24 of 5.6 million, 174% reserve. Expenditure highlights I'd want to talk about out of the general fund is payroll line. We see an increase of 7.1%. Health insurance, that's for pay adjustments and performance increases. A health insurance increase of 8, 8.8% as the board remembers. We did 20% dental, 100% of vision with the last insurance and still did the 80/20 coverage. HRA is an increase of 50% and, and that's because of the increase on the participants in the HRA, in the health program. An IMRF increase of 30.1%. We went from a 13.4 to a 16.8 on the IMRF rate. On the legal side, sorry, Dick. On the legal side, and I think this is attributed to the change of a, a village manager in the interim status with Mr. Ballin, but we're going to see a, a lower expenditure than what was budgeted for the year in legal expense. So we're, we're projecting a 37.7 less from amended to projected. That can certainly change because of things that happened in, in the last couple of months of the year. And we're doing a 50% increase in training dollars for staff. So our projected budget is, I'm, I'm sorry, our planned budget for fiscal year 23, 24 is 4, 4,900, $4,965 in revenues, 3.2 million in expenditures with a, a net $786,000 in revenues to expenditures. Or fuel tax dollars, unless anybody had a question about any of the lines on that budget. I'm sorry.
Well, so what's the action tonight? And I'll, trustee Kritzmeyer, you're here too. This is our first review of a budget, right? So what's the action? Do I take a look at it, provide feedback?
Yes.
That's not in this meeting right now.
Whatever feedback the board members want either now or, or at the, through email before we present the next draft of the budget.
Yeah, there is no, there is no official action tonight.
Correct.
I have a question.
Sure.
Dumb question, I'm sure.
No, it's not a dumb question.
So the surpluses that we're projecting while right now it's hope, right?
So it's a projection.
Project, right, right. What are the plans for those extra dollars? We, we prioritized, I know, in our meetings with capital improvement, but I mean, it was the purpose of that.
And, and, and that's exactly right. We can take the capital improvement plan and we can accelerate things if we choose this. To Vic's point, it's a plan. It's, this is what we project happening in this year, this year, this year. Or we can turn around and say, if we're going to do the 1.2 million dollars in roads, do we take another million from, from our, our surplus and apply it to pathways or something up north or what, you know, whatever the case. That's up to the board. It's up to the board how they want to take that ser, that reserve, but 174% of a reserve is, is a pretty healthy reserve.
Yeah. Okay, and those, those monies sit in just a regular checking account type account? Is that accurate or do we have monies?
And we move it around, get the best interest rate and, yeah.
I, I do have just a quick, fast, I think it's a quick, fast question. I'm the Department 71, capital improvement, I agree with destruction. We said that we spent a buffalo creek planting, $27,324. What, what plantings were there?
Um, that was the, the agreement with the forest preserve.
On Cheker?
On Cheker Road.
Ah, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, because I, okay, thank you.
Yep. And I don't know how it all breaks. Was it just the plantings or was that the driveway and everything else?
No, that's just the plantings.
Yeah, okay.
We have plantings over there too. Thought it was that, so.
No, no, we put trees up too.
The trees then to buffer the, the use of the houses and.
Yeah.
Those, thank you, thanks.
My country club.
Oh, so it's both the forest preserve.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Because I'm thinking.
Yeah, we put.
Oh, no.
You're thinking over here.
Yeah, no, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of energy in one of them that I need to talk about. All right, so any other questions here? Because you've got a, how many more budgets do you have to review?
Well, motor fuel tax is pretty simple. It's going to come in, expense to budget 97.2%. We had 569,240 in cash on hand coming into, or balance on hand coming into the year. We're going to spend $720,000 out of that money. Actually this, yeah, I'm sorry.
Motor fuel tax is pretty consistent. Or are we, we?
Yeah, more, more or less, it's, it's, yeah, more or less. And I don't have the numbers with me, but it was the multiplier that we got per cap from IML.
Yeah, and IML had, IML in my experience over six years has been pretty consistent. So it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable benchmark for us to budget from.
Thank you. And by the way, we can hear you loud and clear. You're on your cellular phone here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in, I'm in an elevator lobby right now that has absolutely all kinds of echoing kind of areas.
You're fine.
Go ahead, Greg.
So.
Keep going.
Okay. Infrastructure, we're going to come, we're, we've got a budget of $902,000 in expenditures, 865 in revenue. However, trustee Kritzmeyer and I had a discussion earlier today. I may have, on my revenue streams, I tend to be more conservative. So I need, she wants me to take another look at that revenue number based on what we're doing on state regular sales tax that, and kind of see if that number needs to come up. So I'll be making an adjustment, I will likely make an adjustment to that number. The water SSA numbers, we've levied our, we've levied our SSA taxes. Those numbers are what those numbers are. The water operation fund, my intent is to bring to the board the RFP response, because we only had one, for the water operation distribution. We published in the paper and we only got one response. Baxter Woodman came to the table and then turned around and withdrew. They said they didn't want to submit something, so. So I'll bring those numbers, but those numbers are factored into this budget. So I'll, I'll bring the RFP response to the board at the next meeting. Downtown water SSA, same thing. The SSA dollars were levied, so we know what those numbers are going to be. Open space fund, you'll look there and it says there is a fund reserve at 3.1 million dollars. Some of that is receivables that we, we don't have yet. So it's not to be thought of as cash in the bank for those open space funds.
Those monies are to purchase?
Oh.
Open space, correct?
By, yeah, by ordinance and by law, I think, right?
Well, but open space, if it's not vacant land, we can use for other purposes. Is that correct?
It's for the purchase of land. It can't be used for installing a, installing a pathway, for example. It can't be used for maintenance of the land. It's only for land acquisition.
Of, yes.
Right.
Not for commercial purposes, but for open space.
Right, for open space.
Parking.
Correct.
Parks, whatever.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that the property itself has to be vacant, you know, it could be property for which we raised a building or something like that, but yeah, that's the purpose. It's not intended for building a village hall. It could be open space next to a village hall, but it couldn't be.
And, and is this just generated from housing? Housing?
These are only from our impact fees that come from housing. Now, out of this.
There's no source.
Correct. Now, keep in mind, a lot of that number is the bank amount that was then invested in the TIF. And that's the receivable that I believe Greg was referencing.
Right.
Yeah, recall that there, there was a, there's a number, there was an amount that was accrued up to 2008 and then that was invested in the debt issued by our TIF district.
The, the last fund that I provided the board was the ARPA fund and that has been directed towards, at least for now, the, the expansion of village hall. The architect will be in at the next meeting to answer any other questions that the board members may have too. But those monies have been allocated based on the amount that's been in the capital, that's in the capital improvement plan. The, the bottom line on the budget is Long Grove is in an exceptionally strong financial position in regards to its general fund and just about all of its other funds. Those numbers have been laid out. I, I welcome all the board's input. There's an opportunity to look at various projects from a capital standpoint that may be a benefit to various parts of the village because we're fortunate enough to, to be able to be in this position. So when looking at the capital improvement plan and, and the budget funds, whatever direction the board wants us to, to take or look at, we're certainly ready to do that.
Okay, so everyone get feedback to Greg and, right, just to you, right, trustee?
Yep, myself and, Ann and I are meeting tomorrow, but we've been communicating on the budget.
Okay.
If, if we were going to do, Natalie and I watched the.
Communications link.
Part of the seminar, I watched part of the seminar, so. If we were going to do, undertake a rebranding initiative, like some of the towns that they highlighted in that presentation, under what, under what, out of what bucket does that come?
It would be an operating expense, not capital.
I got it.
And then we would create a line in the budget to, to do that.
What do you mean by rebranding?
Well, they had a, there was a seminar, um, today, three hours seminar. And, and they were focusing on marketing their communities and they highlighted scopes and handled parts. Two towns. And individuals were aged, shall we say, and they, and how they revitalized. They did it in conjunction with economic development and they talked about steps in the, something like that. And it, it made a lot of sense to me. They, they did point out when expenses, like when they, when COVID and handled parts, there's five, seven years ago, they started out with $20,000 and both, both commentators said, you, you never get anything for that kind of money today. Closer to total budget of 40 or 50,000. But, but what they did with, with the visuals, like they're, like we have the bridge on, on most of our stationery and signs and stuff. When they hired people, they presented, you know, however many samples they did and they, they chose this branding and then they showed how they used it throughout the community for festivals, for art, for heart districts and so on. It was worthwhile, listen, and I think it was recorded, um, I, I'm pretty sure Natalie recorded it, 'cause I missed the last part and she said, yeah, I recorded it, so. Um, but it, it, it was enlightening, and, and I thought, why not? It's something to consider.
Any, any other questions for that? No, I'm gonna keep.
No, no, I, I just had no idea where, where she was going.
Um, there was a, yeah, webinar, I guess, on branding, so. All right, so I'm gonna keep us moving, thank you for that, okay?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I saw the webinar and glad you attended. Um, I'm gonna keep us moving, 'cause we're running out of time and we do have to do one other thing tonight yet, so. Village and Pres- President and Trustee reports. I, you have in your packet, um, a recommendation to appoint, uh, Jeff Burke, um, to the, the Conserv- uh, Conservancy and Senate Quarter Committee. Um, this guy lives in Long Grove, he's been here a year and a half. Uh, he, um, was interviewed by Jeanette Berger. He previously did something similar when he was in Hoffman Estates. Uh, he, uh, he's very interested in pathways. He's very interested in, uh, creating that green space, uh, he wants to see the Route 53 area decom- decommissioned.
Green corridor.
Green corridor.
And that is not.
The green corridor, whatever words you wanna use, there we go. Um, I recommend that we appoint him, um, he's gonna be a great addition to the CSEC.
He's got a great resume.
He's an awesome resume, too.
Really?
Yeah, so does anyone wanna? Yes, okay, uh, moved by trustee Browski, second by trustee O'Connor, roll call, please.
Trustee Browski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Um, I'm gonna keep us moving, any other, trustee Browski, any report?
No, sir.
Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer?
Nothing. We've, we've already discussed budget, we'll be, have more substantial con- uh, discussions the next two meetings.
Trustee Micho?
No report.
Trustee O'Connor?
No report.
Trustee O'Reilly?
No.
Trustee Tanucci?
Um, I'll defer till next time due to the lateness of the hour, so no.
Village manager Jackson?
Only thing I have is Phil Phillips' stage, we gotta call, um, they're looking to do their final.
Okay, um, so, we, we cannot go yet, we have something else to, to talk about. I need a, a motion to go into executive session.
For purposes of personnel.
For purposes of personnel. Somebody wanna make a motion? I've lost everyone.
Yes.
Okay, so moved by trustee O'Connor, second by trustee Browski. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee O'Connor. Hi. Trustee Browski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Thank you.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried.
Do you need to shut off any?
Shut that camera down, please, yeah.
Shut, shut the camera?
Yeah.
Are you, and you'll lock the both doors?
I'll lock, but both doors up, yeah, don't worry. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey Vic? I was, the guy, Phil Phillips' stage called.
Um, I'm, I'll probably be, my best time to reach me will be on in-between meetings, probably between, uh.
Can you shut that PC down, just shut it down?
Twelve thirty.
Yeah, just close it, I think it'll, or just, just knock it out of zoom.
Yeah, I, that, that's, that's my, my only win, my.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, leave meeting, leave the meeting.
Between 12:30 and 1:30, I should be good.
Okay, thanks Vic.
Thank you, okay. Um, pretty cool room.
Okay, we're just missing, uh, Anne. Okay, um, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Varoski.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Michelle.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.